3:30. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call this special council meeting to order at 3:30. Um, what call?
Tom Harlow.
Ben Keel.
Adam.
Marty Johnson.
Deb Geltzer.
Kirby is not here at the moment, we'll push up later. Um, this meeting is to discuss city council member communication with staff. We have a couple of concerns, as you all are aware, on just behaviors on with staff council and we're hoping just to get that table clear and move forward with everything that we need to do. So, an email was sent out last week, I don't have that email with me, but in the just of it, um, just a reminder that council is... Alright, oh wait a second. Hello?
That noise that my mom saw said absolutely hello, all of the turtles are coming up.
For the picture or something.
Okay, as always, we just heard Kirby, so we are going, um, as I mentioned, that we are here because there's some concerns in regards to council communicate, or yeah, council communication with staff and council communication among council. So, um, if you all are aware that the email was sent out last week in regards to Council Martin Johnson going into City Hall and asking for some information on solar farms and the concern then is what authority does council have? Um, I think all of us kind of responded that council has the authority as a whole council to ask staff to do different things, but not as an individual. So, um, with that, we can open it up for discussion and see exactly what was going on to get us to this point. So, do you have a copy of the letter? Interview the one, anybody?
Who's gonna start?
You can.
Okay, now is it against the rules to come into City Hall and pick up information and somebody else is supposed to lead with them for me to pick up? That's what I did.
Well, that's what I-
And I went into City Hall and I asked him, Miles had given her the list or whatever, and she said no. And I said, oh, and she said, uh, and she went on to say, um, well, Miles has been off the busy-
Can you bring the microphone a little better, 'cause I know it's hard to hear on the recording, sorry about that. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, Miles was off the busy, he's been on vacation and he's been on jury duty. And I, and I said, well, maybe there wasn't one of us, you know, 'cause he said he'd get one. And when he said that, he was right next to Deb, I'm sure Deb heard that. So that's what I went in and asked for, and that was-
Was that during the planning and zoning meeting or after it was adjourned?
Well, I thought it was before, but it was right at the tail end. I mean, uh, somebody also asked for a cup, did you listen to the thing, did you?
No, I haven't, no, no.
Somebody asked for a cup too.
The IUP?
The IUP. But if, but if you recall at the beginning of the meeting, I had said at the very beginning of the meeting that we did not, I did not bring a copy because Miles and I want to go out to the solar farm and we want to look and compare what their landscaping and fencing requirements were and bring it back to the planning and zoning commission at that time. Because it doesn't really pay to discuss it until we have an opportunity to evaluate that.
And all I wanted was a list of cities that he said he had, so that I could check on council. And now I don't know, is there something really to add with that?
I guess, I guess, you know, you know, it, maybe the way it was brought up to him, I don't know, I wasn't at the meeting, I, you know, um, you know, so I guess, you know, the, I guess the main topic is here is that, you know, not, not any one of us individually gives them direction, it's all says whole.
Yeah, but is that, is that giving direction, is asking for something that somebody was supposed to left out from that, is that direction?
I, I, to be honest with you, I do not recall you asking him to give you a list of anything, so-
He was sat right next to him.
I, I guess that would be, that would be something for you to direct at Miles then and not at Deb and reach out to Miles, you know, probably via email, 'cause then you have a copy of when you did it and what was said, say, you know, Miles, you know, hey, can you drop, can you drop this information off at City Hall for me?
Well, I better not go in and ask for it, though, I can't remember.
Well, I think you can, we can ask, you know, if there was an understanding that that's what Miles was gonna do, but I think we also have to realize how we're asking and I think right now there's a lot of tension going on here, all of our council, and this is why I came over here, we just, all need to get past it, so, um-
Yeah, it's, well, I agree, Michelle, sometimes it's just how you say things on how they're perceived by, by different people, and I don't, I wasn't there, I don't, I don't know what happened, it was just, sometimes it's how you say things, it was just, hey, can you help me out with this, or, where is this, I need this? It's kinda can get taken wrong, just, and, you know, we, we need the city staff, 'cause without them, they don't work.
Compared to this, now, it was the only I told her to get a load of Miles and get the information, and I did not do that. I just asked for it, she said no, and I didn't tell her to go get it or nothing.
You asked me to have Miles get the information?
No, I did not, that's not true.
Well, okay, but either way, let's just say, you know, um, I, we can reach out to Miles and see, you know, what was actually discussed at the planning and zoning meeting, or, you know, go ahead and listen to the meeting, 'cause I don't know, we weren't there, um, we had two council members there. Whether, well, I know, but whether it happened during the meeting or after the meeting, that's something we don't know, so, um-
Can I just bring up a point?
Yeah.
I could have Miles do that, but I guess my point in the email was, is that you can go to any city website and you can look up their ordinances and you can find the solar ordinances, and do you want to pay Miles the money that he gets paid per hour to look that stuff up?
Nobody wanted that information, I don't think.
What, what information, I, I-
Miles said he was gonna get a list of the cities that's got solar fields in the city limits, and he was gonna give it to Deb and I could pick it up in the office from Deb.
To compare ordinances, or?
No, 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 'cause he, I don't wanna get into that, the ordinance is kinda quite been the same. I just wanted to know what cities they had, so I could go and check and see how the cities feel about it. 'Cause most cities that I stopped to, no, they don't allow them in the city limits, because wherever they put them, it's always something on a horse that, something's gonna come along and then it's tied up, like, you know, the last one we got right in the middle of our supposedly industrial park, that may hinder the industry from coming in, you know, that's what I'm concerned about.
But, the problem with it is that we are at the point of the ordinance that they have come to an agreement, the planning and zoning and what they want in the ordinance, how they want it amended, and so, um, and you, and you know this, they have enough frustration because this keeps happening, that it keeps getting changed and we keep talking about it, and so at the last meeting, they gave direction to Miles on what exactly they want in the ordinance. So, um, I guess, I guess my question is, is asking for information, that's fine, any city council member can, and all of you have asked me for information, and I don't think one of you can't say to, to me that I didn't get it to you immediately, because I do, I never say I've ever worked it, you can go ask any of my council members, I always do it right away, department heads, I always did it right away, got them the information. My concern is, what, what do you need that information for, what are you gonna use with it? And I'll give an example of when you came in and asked for the AU, AR information, that took me quite a bit of time to copy those, 'cause the books are this thick and I had to copy each page, and I don't know what you needed that for, or what you ever used it for. So, I guess, if, and, and I don't care, like I said, you can ask me to do anything, but how much time do you wanna spend on staff time doing things like that that are futile, basically? And, um, I really don't think that you wanna spend consultant time looking up different things that you could look up yourself, that was the point of my email.
And I think we all agree with that. Um, I think I responded to that, if, if a council member is passionate about something, you know, let's just, I'm gonna do solar farms, obviously, um, whether we're for it or against it, or whatever it may be, any history, it's hard, I feel I would call the cities myself and look into whatever needs to be looked into, so that I can come back to the council and say, okay, this is what I found, you know, I did some research on it and this is what I've come up with, and I'm gonna give that information to the council, because staff time and definitely consultant time, it costs the ten, well, more so consultants, um, costs a ton of money, so-
But then on the, on the staff time though, too, is, is you look at the best use of their time.
Right.
You know, to me, they, they do have their normal day jobs and they have to get done, and then, to me, like a request, like something like that would be a secondary or a tertiary, you know?
Well, if Miles would have sent it to them, it shouldn't have taken but a second to hand it to me.
Yeah, yeah, correct, correct, yes, so I guess, I guess that shouldn't have been straight-
He was on jury duty for two weeks, so he, he, he couldn't do anything, basically. I mean, there was some things that had to go through as far as these future things that are coming up for the June meeting, and so he had someone from his office work on what they could, but it's hard when they have the history, it's hard for them to have someone else do the work. And again, putting a list together like that is costing the city taxpayers money, because he, he charged us to put that list together.
Why do you wanna interview the cities that's, I mean, that one's there for another 25 years?
You know, if you remember back, when we talked about the park rent fees and the AUR fees and all that kinda stuff, well, Deb went ahead and called Buffalo and Watertown so we could compare notes.
I did not, I did not call those cities to compare notes, um, the city planner-
Or you must have emailed them or something.
Mark Coltes, the city planner, did at that time, because he worked with those cities on some of those items. Um, I, if I ever called anybody for park dedication, it would be for cities that I've worked for that I'm aware of it and know it, like Delano or Woodstead or Big Lake, not Watertown or Buffalo. And at the time when we discussed that, the city planner had put that information together, and then Miles and Steve Gritman did the same thing with Buffalo and Watertown, because they used the information from Mark Coltes, and Steve Gritman is the city planner for the city of Buffalo, so he had that information.
Well, what do we need to compare for, that's, that's why I'm here.
I don't even know why I'm here, really, but-
Well, I don't understand, you're not really explaining why we're comparing, like, it's there, it's there for another 25 years, you can't just kick-
Oh, no, no, we can't take them out, we could prevent it from happening in front
So, so it comes down to-
Before the taxpayers of Montrose.
So it comes down to not wanting that additional solar farm, but they're next to the other.
Any solar farm, not just one, 'cause we're writing the ordinance for not just one, for all those.
The possibility of others.
Yes, no.
'Cause it brings us money, right? Or saves us money.
If we had, I think the residents would rather have industrial people there and businesses there to bring more tax revenue in than what we're getting out of it. Solar people.
The proposed one that, that they're proposing to bring in, nobody else can build on that, it can't be industrial, can't be anything else, it's the wastewater treatment facility property that's never gonna be used for anything, can't be used for anything. And, um, the revenue yearly from that would start at $15,000 between what they would pay for the lease and what taxes would bring in, and then that would increase every year. And I, I just don't know how, being, trying to be financially fiscal, you could deny something like that. Now, we have not heard from them, again, for a while, but that property is available and it's never, they left the doors open this weekend, Wendy said, for graduation, and now we have flies all over. It's, it's not gonna be able to be used for anything else, it's just gonna sit there empty, so it would be a good revenue source for the city.
So, where did we come with the $15,000 figure?
Because it's $10,000, they, they would pay $1,000 an acre, and there's eight to 10 acres there. Um, it's possible to do 10, we would have to just move fence, and then Wendy figured out the taxes that that would bring in, and it would be about $5,000. I guess my thing is, you know how busy we all are as staff, and we had some really good interviews, and we have a really good candidate for administrator assistant position, and they can do some of that research, but if it's for things that you're really not gonna use, it's taking up a lot of staff, unnecessary staff time, and I really try to do as much as I can on my own, because consultants are expensive, to have them do that, you don't want to have them do that work, because with the availability of information on the internet, a lot of that you can look up yourself if you're really curious. But like I said, the solar energy systems ordinances are gonna be very similar for every city, because they're highly restricted by state statute, and so, um, when, at the time that we did this ordinance, staff told me that it was very similar to all the area cities, because everybody was adopting it, and it's, it's like we always say in the world of city administration and city clerks, why reinvent the wheel? So we all the time try to get ordinances from other communities, because why do you wanna rewrite that whole thing? And all ordinances of someone, for instance, the city of Delano redid their whole personnel policy, so the city of Woodstead, while I was still there, we got their personnel policy, because everything was according to state statute, um, and they worked with the League of Minnesota Cities, and they, even though they paid lawyers' fees to get that all set up and going, um, they did give it to us, so that we didn't have to rewrite the whole thing again. So, um, that's what happened when they initially did the solar energy ordinance here.
Alright. Is there anything more on this topic? This particular solar topic, email?
Solar?
The email? Nope, did you have something else?
On communications in general.
Okay.
What, what is our policy, or what are our feelings on using Facebook?
We have a policy.
What is that policy?
Offhand, I don't, to be honest, I don't know what it is, offhand, um, but most of us try to hopefully stay away from the negativity that goes on on Facebook. Are you-
Well, yeah, I've got a couple issues, recent Facebook, you know, I discuss, sometimes I'll discuss national politics, but I don't take on anything local to the city, because I am an elected official in the city, but when you post something like this and say, this goes for local government also, what, where do you need, is somebody being beaten up that I'm not aware of?
I, that is my opinion, and just local county, schools, everything, just, everybody just-
No one's, no one's thinking finger is stopping, one stinking finger is stopping, what does that mean?
I, just like I said, the, the local government, everybody is looking at, you know, pinpointing Wright County for, the Wright County petition stuff that's going on right now, the school stuff that's going on right now, and it's not just Republicans, Democrats, liberals, whatever, it's everybody in general. In my opinion, I don't think everybody has all of the information that's out there. And not, if you have like information on the Wright County or the schools, 'cause those are the big hot topics right now, um, people aren't sharing it, you know, and do I want to host things about the schools? And my opinion's absolutely, because I really feel that, um, as I stated this before, I'll use Wright County as an example, this, there's 3,000 signatures that are needed, and that's all it says right now, is 3,000 signatures, and everybody's going against the county commissioners right now, but did anybody look at all that information? And get all of the information out there, as to is it gonna continue to cost the taxpayers money, is, what is the next process, all of that, and nobody's sticking up for just the local, in general, the same for the schools.
To be honest, I, I reported on that in the council meeting.
Right, and I asked questions on that.
I was sure you thought what was going on, the only thing you asked me was, was I, where it was gonna cost $100,000 for them to do it.
And I asked, you know, what it all costs.
But it had nothing to do with what I presented, I was preventing, presenting facts from the commissioners meetings.
Right.
I didn't take a side, I'm already over on the vote, I still don't have a side on the vote.
I'm not saying that you do, but I was-
'Cause I can understand both sides.
Oh, absolutely.
You know? Same in the meetings, I understand what's going on.
Yep, I think we all do, but that's my whole point, is, you know, everybody is currently watching, you see, well, we need 3,000 votes to do this, yeah, you're right, we do, but then what's the process after that? That's the information that, you know, is, I don't think is being shared enough.
But I think you're diverting a little bit, Michelle, you're the mayor of this town.
Yep.
And when you say this goes for local government also, that tells people that are reading Facebook, she must be talking about city council.
It could be.
Okay?
But you know what, I can say the same thing, I guess, because I, I've said it before, and the reason why we're here is because there is a lot of tension, and I don't think there needs to be.
This is causing more tension.
No, what is causing more tension is the fact that we go behind each other and we say, well, Michelle is doing, you know, you called me under the carpet a couple months ago, because I went to a city council meeting in Clear Lake, you know, you went behind my back, which is, you have every right to do that, and you went and talked to city staff, but when I reached out to you personally and I said, what can I help you with, what do we need to discuss, and you said, I can't do that.
City staff called me in.
And, and I understand that, I'm not, I'm not saying that they didn't, and, but when I reach out to you and I say, what, what's going on, I can help you and I will be open and honest with you about anything, if you would've just said, hey, listen to what you said to me and you know it, and-
And I didn't go behind your back, I sat down with you and put the letter in front of you, what, I didn't post, I didn't call Doug and tell him, here, put this in the paper, this was a conversation that we were gonna have about these four or five bullet items.
Right.
So I did read it to you.
So, but let me-
And what happened in the next meeting?
The next meeting?
Yeah.
Well, the next meeting, we had a management coordinating meeting, and, um, it was discussed with you that by council members, that you could just come to us at any time. If you felt me going to talk to Dale Powers and state my opinion that Dale Powers is continuing to talk about the city of Montrose negatively, and you could come to me.
But, sure.
Ah, and, hold on. Also, at the council meeting before that, I wanted to address that at a council meeting, when we go through our council staff and say, we're meeting Ben, I was willing to discuss that, but I was shot down and said, let's not discuss that now, that was by Ben.
Well, yes, it, it also, though, too, when you look at the, their official city minute, their notes from it, um, it reads as though as you were there on representing the council, because it states that, you know, Mayor Michelle Otto was there, not, not citizen Michelle Otto, because it really, 'cause you, you weren't there in official capacity, but, but if you were to read their minutes, it would, shouldn't say, it would-
I can't justify how their minutes are, I mean, I don't approve them or name say them, but I will-
Did you, did you introduce yourself as High End Michelle Otto Mayor of Montrose?
Probably, yes.
And, and that is, but that is kind of-
Actually, I think I may have even said, I'm Michelle Otto, an elected city official. And I am here, and I am here-
You introduced yourself as mayor, 'cause I asked you this.
Yep, and, and that's also, I would say, I'm here to talk to you about the way your council members are portraying our city, and we, we received emails, Deb received emails after that stating how very well conducted I was, how very well I represented the city of Montrose, and how they would actually, um, not mind me having represented them as well, and as I stated at the term at the meeting where he called me in to be out, you know, to whatever, I would do it again, absolutely, so, in the sense of change, secondly.
I'm not gonna argue with you, I, I agree, he, Dale did put a pledge in my soul.
A little bit.
And, and you know that just as well as I did, and at the, at the deal there, I, he started to try, and I cut him out, every time he tried, I cut him out. I guess, to me, if you're going there, it would've been, it, it's almost a little misleading, you introduce yourself as the mayor, 'cause of how difficult this is here and there on official capacity.
But even, even just beside that, I'd like a heads up, like, stuff like that happens in the future, 'cause I was blindsided, but all of a sudden I got, I got a message from a buddy of mine who lives up in Clear Lake, and all of a sudden he goes, your mayor was here tonight, and it was interesting, and I go, I didn't elect.
And again, I tried to talk about it here at our council meeting, and I was told, no, not to do that, and I stated, if there's anything any of you wanna know, I'll tell ya, I, I don't have a problem telling you, I don't have a problem sticking up for city staff and our council members, even though we're not all perfect, even though we all screw up, and we may not do, you know, you may not do it out of it, but hey, when we're here, I'm still gonna back you up, and I don't feel that that's happening right now with the five of us, so.
Well, not to, we're diverting from the, my original question on Facebook, I was reading Ashlyn's post here, and it talks about, I'm not gonna lie to you guys, I'm getting over, I'm seeing the world through rose colored glasses, and actually really disappoints me to see how people treat my mom, because they don't agree with all her political opinions. What is she talking about?
My daughter is 20 years old.
What political opinions is she talking about, and do you feel-
You would have to ask her. I, I, see, I'm not-
Michelle, and this is on Facebook, you see the position that puts everybody-
Oh, I absolutely do see it, yes, I do.
She's your daughter.
That's right.
I don't want my wife posting stuff like this on Facebook.
You know what, I totally understand that, I don't, I'm not gonna sit here and defend my daughter, you can ask her personally.
I don't want to recall this.
But you want to recall, because right now, if you read what she wrote, she is very hurt. By the way, you two-
Hey, I corrected that, did I say one word not meaning about Death Carbon Field? I'm sitting here in Death Carbon Field.
I'm sure you weren't, because you didn't want it open.
I couldn't care less for what you did.
You, you said in City Hall, and you stated you would rather have it closed than have the Otto family run it.
I said once, is that the Otto family shouldn't get any special privileges on the, just, they should be treated just like anybody else in their community, if they wanna rent the concession stand, now we've set precedents, so any Tom, Nick and Harry in the city can go in there right now and say, hey, you waived the fee for the Otto family, and you're gonna waive it for me too.
And I think that council member here at that time said that, that the fees should be waived in general, that the fees will go in place for a certain reason.
One council member wouldn't say anything, and we wouldn't be able to hold on.
That's right, we don't-
And we didn't hold on.
And we didn't, but, again, my daughter is very passionate about this particular issue, so, and being 20 years old, I can't always stop what she does, can I always agree with what she does, or for anything, my husband does the same thing, and I said, hey, you know what, you need to watch sometimes what you're doing.
This is, Facebook is being used as a weapon, and none of us on this council should be involved for our families, involved posting right up this-
You're right, so, I, I do not disagree with you, so the stuff that is on Facebook right now, the last council meeting that is on that Facebook that is ripping apart me and Lloyd, and giving kudos to Ben, Tom and Kirby, how many of you liked the post merits, me and Lloyd? I don't think you did, I don't think you did, but Ben did and Kirby did.
I liked one comment.
I liked, I liked the comment of-
So that's-
Somebody who's going to run for council again in the future, that, who I like, I liked his one specific comment about he's going to run again, that was my thing.
And I also had many citizens come to me in the city and ask if they can store their personal property in city buildings for free also.
That personal property that is sitting in that city building, we will take out. We, okay, we will take it out, and unfortunately, Kirby, you need to find a refrigerator, a freezer and a cooler, as well as the carvers. as well as the carvers need to find that, because that stuff that's in there is not just used by us.
Wayne, the day that you remove it, Wayne will have a new one replaced the next day.
I'm sure he will.
I've already spoken with Wayne.
So let me ask you, Ben, why are you so against us keeping this equipment in there for all of Montrose community to use? The carvers who created this field continue to have a fundraiser after September, right after Labor Day. And they are using coolers that are in there.
I'm going to clarify something with that, because Wendy did check with them before we did think about getting rid of any of that stuff, and they don't use any of it. They told Wendy they do not use any of it.
So they don't use the coolers? And who puts the stuff in there when we go in there and have that?
I don't know.
But I mean, that's fine, too. I mean, Kirby uses it, I know he does.
No, so I just wanted to clarify that. She did check in and carver said that they don't, so whether they do or not, I don't know.
That's fine.
So, I'm not going to say the stuff that's in there, that, okay, so you like this snow cone machine?
There's a little stand underneath. There's not a machine in there, it's just a stand.
Okay. The cookie ovens, do you have a license to utilize them?
I have a license, yes.
To utilize them at Carver Field?
Mm-hmm. I'm taking everything out. What is in there currently right now will be beverage juice and I think we bought air hats, green pops, baked popcorn, whatever. And I will take it out. I don't, I don't have an issue with that. My issue is, we're taking away from other organizations potentially using these items. And if you notice, there are people that are, that love going and having these concessions open. My complaint to you, not my complaint, my concern, not my daughter's concern, is why are you guys so against it?
I guess I'm looking out for the liability issues on the city's behalf.
What liability issues? Considering the licenses in my car that I received the next day after the meeting, like I said I was going to, but I do it right here.
Have you shared that with city staff?
No, because I've been at work. Wendy asked me for it today and it'll go up to her today. Or not today, because city hall will be closed, but probably Wednesday, we'll go to Park and Rec meeting. When I share all of this information with the Park and Rec commission, who is a big part of this? You guys are even going against everything that Park and Rec wanted? Because Park and Rec just said, "Give us a list of everything that belongs to the items and everything that belongs to the city. That's all we need. We want you to continue to run this. We don't have an issue, just fill out the forms. We don't even want the fees in there. Go to the council and ask for the fees to be waived." Everything right now is going against what Park and Rec wanted, but you know, that's all right.
I guess I haven't had any Park and Rec members reach out to me and...
They stand here at the podium every month and state this.
So he stated, so...
Matt stood here and stated that they didn't have a problem with a third party running the concessions as long as they fill out the form, which then we went and filled out the form, and then we needed to come to council and ask for the fee to be waived, which we did. We came to the council, asked for the fee to be waived, the council voted to waive the fee.
That's the only thing I voted against.
Correct.
Because I did not want to set precedence.
Correct.
But I have a reason for that.
Yep, and I understand that, yep.
I guess, you know, I mean, I asked, you know, what was in there that was the city's and, you know, and stated that everything in there had been the city's and you had donated and stuff, but, you know, I guess I look for traceability, you know, with my, with my work. I have, everything that I do, it has to be traced. If I order something, it has to be traced. I have traced how much I paid for it, when I bought it, where I bought it from, and, you know, I mean, you say that you guys donated those, the pop cooler and the other, the, you know, just the traceability of, you know, yes, that those are the cities. You know, did you, you know, donation, even if it's donation that says, "Hey, I, Ashlan Otto, donate this pop cooler to the city here. This is the city's." You know, they're just...
So then, do you want her to say, "I, Ashlan Otto, donated $50 for the license? I, Ashlan Otto, donated..."
The $50 for the license, that's whatever, but I mean, if there's stuff that's being donated to the city, to me, yes, there should be something stating that, yes, that's being donated to the city.
Absolutely. And if you recall, Ben, it was discussed with Park and Rec as well as here, that at the end of the season, the very minimal amount that is made, because we sell a green pop for like 50 cents, so, you know, invested nothing, that Ashlan Otto would come to a council meeting and donate that money back.
Okay.
That was stated. So I don't understand what the big...
I was talking about the stuff that previously that you said, that you guys don't, just...
Well, the, everything that's in there is from money that has been made from, because you, I know your perception is that we profit from this. I mean, not necessarily...
No, I don't have a perception of that. I just have a perception of traceability on what is the city's and what isn't the city's. And that's what I wanted to know.
And I understand that. That's the same thing Park and Rec wanted to know, and that information will be given at the next meeting. And that was not at this, the meeting.
As far as the license goes, that belongs to Ashlyn, not the city.
Right.
So we shouldn't be reimbursing Ashlyn. Ashlyn should say, "I donated $50 to buy a license" because she wants to do that.
Right.
So that's, that's the cost of doing business.
That's right.
Right, right. And, but the whole point behind our argument, again, I wish she could have mentioned it, but I didn't know this was going to be brought up. So the whole point behind our argument is, she puts in her money for the license, she puts in her money to purchase everything that goes in there, her time and everything for the community. And in her eyes, on that post, the city is not okay with that. The city is totally against her doing that and continuing to do stuff for the community. It, it, and it seems like you guys are totally against it and don't want it. And I get, like I said, Park and Rec wanted the same thing. What's in there? And it would be given in June, but...
Michelle, I'm going to repeat this for like the third time in this meeting. I'm not against it. I'm just trying to be fair and equitable to all the other residents of the community. So if we waive the fee for Ashlyn, we're going to have to waive the fee for everybody else that comes along and wants to run something out of the concession stand. That's it, that's my point. So quit saying, "I'm beating people up and upset", I don't want to think open.
I guess I'm not saying that directly to you because, as you stated, you only voted against that portion of it. I think Ben will pass more of an issue with it than anything.
My issue is traceability on things, and that's what I'm...
And see, and the issue, we go through this every year. We should really be used to this, but...
Okay, but let's move on then.
No, I'm not ready to move on yet. The whole issue is, is the Otto family has done more for this community than any one of you sitting here. That's a fact.
That's a fact, right.
That is a fact. And for you, we'll probably continue to do a lot for the community, but it's just very hard when we have this. And I know that this video's going to go on social media, and that's okay, because it obviously shows that I have a very good passion for what we do. And for everybody to sit here and say, "I cannot believe she's getting so upset over a concession stand", is the fact is, we had a community that reached out to my husband to continue to coach because he's very well-respected. We have had many people reach out to us privately since all of this has come on for continuing to do what we do. Do we have more negativity on social media? Absolutely, because all the little keyboard warriors that are out there are going to feed up negativity. They're not going to feed up what's good. But again, I have been here for almost 47 years. I've been a council member, mayor, whatever it is, for seven years. And not one of you can say what you have done for this community, for the good of the community. I'm going to give Kirby a pass and I'm going to give Tom a pass because they're new to the council.
So starting beyond the O ribbon is not a good thing for our community?
That is, no.
Appreciate knowing that. I hope, I hope you veterans and service members out there also realize that too.
Okay, I'm saying, that was Melissa. And you do assist in that, absolutely.
I helped her do a lot.
And I'm sure that you did. And I'm not saying, I'm saying for, that is a part of the city, absolutely, but Ben, what else is there? Beyond the O ribbon is huge and very much appreciated by everybody that is here. And, you know, and you go back, and I just cannot believe this made us up to this point, but I can go back to many people saying, "Thanks, Ben, for showing up for the fish fry", you know, but...
And I did thank you for it, and I did...
This year. Mm-hmm. But again, how many of you attend the events that go on in this community?[1440.10]